Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes. Public comment, anyone have anything to say? Good or bad, we listen. Okay, we'll move on. Recognition.
This is some of the good stuff. Coach Popple, you want to come on up? First, we're going to recognize the Ruskin Middle School baseball team, the champion Kentucky Middle School baseball tournament. I think Coach Popple is going to kind of talk about how the team got there, and we can call the kids up, recognize the system that helped you there. Coach?
Do you need my word?
I don't really have a problem with that.
Right.
No. Uh, I'm sure everybody, yes, we can get loud when we need to. I'm sure most everybody here knows that we had a pretty successful season this year. The boys did a, they did a great job. A little different year this year. Usually we try to play, you know, our thirty, thirty-five ballgames. Well, you know, being in post-COVID year, you know, we only got to get in twenty-two. So, you know, they played about seventy-five, eight percent of the schedule they usually get to play. But nonetheless, it was still very successful. The boys wound up twenty and two, or twenty-one and two, and won the middle school baseball state tournament. Where we got there, we played, I think we had to win four ballgames to win the state tournament, and the boys outscored their opponents fifty-six to six, five, fifty-six to five. So, they scored a lot of runs and didn't give up very many. We're super proud of them, you know. They battled all year long. They, you know, they played baseball the way we want to play baseball, the way Russell County likes to play baseball, which is fast, play hard, play smart, and do things the right way. And this group of young men is probably one of the best group of young men that I've coached. They're all great kids. They're all great academically. Coach Ellis told me about three weeks into the season, he said this is the best academic team I've seen in a long time. I think they were pretty close to like a three-point, eight-five cross court. Got a few four-one-os in there, you know, and take care of business on.
That would be, because Mr. Ellis would be checking what's great.
Absolutely, absolutely. Everybody's great. Absolutely. But, uh, but we're super proud of them. They worked hard, but you know, they put in the work, and they deserve all the accomplishments that they got. Very proud of them.
Well, that doesn't happen because of Coach?
I know. I told somebody the other day all week to scream all the weak lines, going through the rest of it.
Ms. Yoh, you want to present Maes, or?
I'd love to, I would say.
He's on top, so. Mr. Maes, guys?
Yay for Maes!
Thank you, Jack here. Mr. Parker Riggins? Mr. Doug Campbell? Mr. Carter Snell? Mr. Walker Stevens? Mr. Mason, Jasmine? Tanner Stringer and Ellen Brumley is not with us. Blaine is not with us. Mr. Ben Kemp? Mr. Nathan Allen? And Todd is at church. Country talk, everybody with you. Look this way, boys. All hammering down, I think we're good. Mr. Bowden, let's keep this part open. He's going to talk a little bit about the team and the season. Do you all remember, this is his second time at this school?
Well, it's good to be back up here talking about athletes once again. We had a great season, and on behalf of Coach Scott and I, I can't say enough about not just those four that competed in state, but the entire team. They competed well and represented the school well, which is even more important than me. The, uh, the four that went to the state, we competed in a couple of relays and the eight-hundred. I have two seniors sitting over there, Justin Sterns and Tyler Ludwig, and I'm very proud of them. And in a way, their, uh, their job's done. You know, they're done as, they have no more eligibility left, but they have done a fine job since they have been, I mean, I coach them across country as well as current. And I'll tell you about some of their accomplishments. Justin, for one, we didn't have all our members from one of our relay teams, so he decided he's just going to run the, uh, run the amount in one of our track meets. He ran it four minutes and thirty-nine seconds and set a school record. It's the first time he ran it all year. He set a school record and finished like, I think, top twenty-five in the state. And, uh, that's just one of his accomplishments. He also set a record in the eight-hundred. He ran it in the state, he ran it in two minutes. That's, I don't have my, by the way, in two minutes is pretty good. And I have two sophomore's over there also, Blake Bowen and Clay Cross. And along with Tyler and Justin, they set a school record in the four-by-eight at the region. You know, our goal was to go in and keep up with Marsha County, and we ended up going one. We ran it eight minutes and forty-three seconds. So, we set a few school records this year, so I am very proud of them. And, uh, I hope they have success. Justin, I know he's heading to Lindsey Wilson. And Tyler, if somebody don't sign him, make a mistake because he's an extremely hard worker. That's about it. I'm really proud of them.
And we don't even get to host meetings because we don't have a track that's in condition, but that's on, that's in the works. Obviously, that will be done, and the next, next group of kids can have a track with Coach. Let's recognize the young man, Justin Sterns, state qualified for four-by-four hundred relay, four-by-eight hundred relay. He came in sixth in the state.
He did sixth.
In which one of those, I can't.
He came in sixth in the eight-hundred.
Okay.
And some of the schools we ran against was, it's a pretty broad movement, so we're running against Abuka Philman and some big schools, the Harford County Schools, Desper County Schools.
It's not his story, not both across the state. Congratulations. And I'll just give you four, four hundred and four-by-eight hundred. And Mr. Blaine Bowden, four-by-four hundred and four-by-eight hundred? And Mr. Clay Cross? Oh, you better be back now, too, this ain't. Want to recognize, we had two offerings, two, a couple of these, and Antonio Dela. And I've said this before, board members, you all heard me say this, but I just want to, of course, the coaches represented here today, but our whole athletic coaching staff this year, in the midst of COVID, it's just been a tremendous job on, on working, keeping the kids safe and being able to have a season because we had every single sport, you know, participating. So, that's just, that's just great.
And we are going to do better by the track.
We are. That's on the work, just, we've had two or three meetings over that.
So, hopefully, there may be more members next year do well. Paying attention to items.
We have approval of minutes, paper to bills, construction funds reports, school activity fund reports, financial report, field trips, and the treasurer's monthly report for May of 2021. Ms. Carnes, at this time?
All right, the treasurer's report for the month of May 2021. Balance on hand at the beginning of the month was eight million, two hundred forty-seven thousand, four hundred forty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. Total of the receipts for the month were two million, three hundred seventy-eight thousand, one hundred twenty-six dollars and forty-two cents. Total of the receipts and beginning balance, ten million, six hundred twenty-five thousand, five hundred seventy-three dollars and ten cents. Disbursements for the month were one million, three hundred thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty-one cents. And that brings our balance at the close of the month to nine million, two hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars and eighty-nine cents. In fund balances for the general fund, Fund One, seven million, nine hundred eighty-five thousand, eight hundred fifteen dollars and one cent. Special projects, Fund Two, negative five hundred four thousand, seven hundred fifty-one dollars and forty-two cents. District activity, Fund Twenty-One, four thousand, seven hundred sixty-four dollars and ninety cents. Capital outlay, Fund Three-Ten, two hundred seventy thousand, seven hundred eighty-three dollars even. FSPK building fund, Fund Three-Twenty, one hundred thirty-two thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars and forty-six cents. Construction fund, Fund Three-Sixty, seven hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars and four cents. Debt service, Fund Four Hundred, zero dollars. Food service, Fund Fifty-One, six hundred eighty thousand, one hundred forty-four dollars and twenty cents. fiduciary fund, Fund Seven Thousand, three thousand, six hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventy cents. And the total cash and bank for all funds is nine million, two hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars and eighty-nine cents. And you'll notice the special projects fund two, which is negative. I'm expecting a reimbursement of a little over seven hundred thousand dollars to come in by the end of this month. And some of that negative is explained. We have some things in our SER COVID stimulus monies, which I have not reimbursed yet, so that we still have a little flexibility to move them between the different projects within that, to get them to fit all the different, I guess you could call it regulations on those monies and the different things that we have to meet to make those work, so that we can get the biggest bang out of our buck for those. So, and probably the time I close the year in July, we'll get the money in for those things.
And we've got a little over, I think it's around a million dollars left in our Work Ready Skills Initiative grant. And we've got a lot of equipment coming in now that we've got the invoices and everything been received, so we're getting ready to submit another reimbursement for the equipment and furniture also. If there are no changes or amendments, I recommend approval of the consent agenda items.
I'll make a motion. We approve consent agenda items.
I'll second it.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
We, we would certainly welcome and appreciate you all stayed the entire period, but we understand if you all do need to go, that's, that's fine, too.
Dinner's waiting.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you for counting us.
Well, there they all go.
Stayed really excited.
I mean, oh, I'm sorry.
Next is the fidelity performance bonds of the treasurer.
Uh, June meetings, you all will see a lot of these routine items that we take care of every year. Per KRS one sixty dot five six zero and seven oh two K R three colon zero eight up, zero eight zero. It's the duty of each local board of education to bond its treasurer. Any other school employee who's responsible for board of education funds, bonds are attached for your review. I recommend approval of the performance bonds for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Maybe this is something that we do, which.
I'll make a motion. We approve the fidelity bond of treasurer. Is that over there? I'm going to miss it.
I'll second it.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes. Renewing property, general liability, and fleet insurance.
Okay, our current coverage, again, this is something we take care of every year, for property, general liability, and fleet, the expired June thirtieth, twenty, twenty? One, that's just a typo right there. Um, one million, not one million. Nobody have heard of them, please. One hundred fifteen thousand, eight hundred forty-seven is the first installment, and the remaining half is paid in January of twenty twenty-two. That's it. I recommend that the Ruskin Board of Education renew our policy with Liberty Mutual from McKinney and Blair, the driver insurance agency for property liability and fleet coverage for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. This includes and is upped a little bit of what we've had in the, in the past. Ms. Carnes and I have met with Ms. Sharon Hill. This does include additional data compromised cyber coverage. You all, that's in the news all the time, when information is compromised, they get access to accounts or student information or employee information. And so, that has, this amount includes that. Ms. Carnes previously, this includes five hundred thousand dollars. Previously, was it a hundred thousand? It was a hundred thousand dollars. It wasn't very much, and that's included in now in that general liability part. And this also, for one thousand five hundred eight dollars, includes a generic, I'll say generic because it, it's broad in its coverage, in the fact that if it's a terrorism coverage, but it has to be deemed terrorism by the Department of Homeland Security. But for one thousand five hundred eight dollars, there is a policy part that is included on that, that you'll see that on the next page, that notes out the invoice. That's some of the other things. Some of it has been like a trade-off. Of course, the old school is gone now, but the greenhouse is added. So, that, that, our new building, of course, is worth a lot more than the old area technology center, and also has a lot more nice equipment. And in addition to that, all of our electronic devices, for instance, all of our Chromebooks that we've purchased and things like that, we've added some additional coverage for all of them. That will encompass that with the, with the insurance policy. That's the major changes, Ms. Carnes, unless I've forgotten, yeah, unless I've forgotten something. So.
It's, that includes the new building, too?
It does.
That's pretty good.
Yes, this policy is updated to include the new building. And of course, we've still got the old building, too, so it's covered as well. Yes. Yes. Okay. Just, just to refresh you, refresh that policy. So, I recommend that the Ruskin Board of Education renew our policy with Liberty Mutual from McKinney and Blair, driver insurance for property liability and fleet coverage for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
I'll make that motion. I recommend Ruskin Board of Education renew our policy with, with Liberty Mutual from McKinney and Blair and Rider Insurance Agency, property liability and fleet coverage for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
I'll second it.
Ms. Brenda? Okay. Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes. FY twenty-two pay dates.
This is always an important action item for some reason.
Well, you want to check?
And we want to know when it's coming, too. So, it's necessary for the board to set pay dates for fiscal year twenty-two. I recommend approval of fiscal year twenty-two pay dates as presented. As Ms. Carnes has a note on there, some of those have annotated because it depends on when a holiday falls, and if it's a Saturday, then usually the paycheck will be there on a Friday. If it's a Sunday, the date falls on Monday. And then some of the other holidays, for instance, do you want January first as New Year's Day, January second is a Sunday, and so the paycheck for January third will fall on a Monday. I recommend approval of the fiscal year twenty-two pay dates as presented.
I make a motion that we approve the twenty-two pay dates. Fiscal year twenty-two.
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray, big to Ms. Yoh. Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes. Contracts, memorandum, agreement, approval.
Okay, um, the first one, the energy manager con, memorandum of agreement of agreement of agreement with Mr. Scott Caslow, that is money amounts, and all of that is exactly the same as was last year. Nothing has changed. The only thing that has changed are the dates. If this is effective July one, twenty twenty-one, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And of course, we share that with Science Hill Independent, Somerset Independent, and Wayne County Schools. And Ms. Carnes takes care of that behind the scenes of invoicing them and getting their money. And the second memorandum of understanding, really pleased with this, is with the Kentucky Department of Education. I know you all have reviewed that, but it's two assistant principals that want to participate in this endeavor with Kentucky Department of Education, Ms. Susan Stringer and Ms. Jessica Holt. And this gives them permission to participate in that. There are some days outside of school, but it's a really great leadership opportunity to participate in. So, that memorandum of agreement of understanding is attached there. So, I recommend approval of the contracts and manual memorandums of agreements that's been approved by the board attorney.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract or memorandum of agreement that have been approved by the board attorney.
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes. I would think that'd be a great thing to do.
It's a really good opportunity.
Okay. Twenty twenty-one KSBA policy updates, number forty-four.
Ms. Yoh is going to reference a couple of policies. Of course, this is the first reading and the new policies. You'll notice that this time, our policy revisions, it's, it's a shorter group of policies and policy review than we've had in the, in the past.
Same lack of law.
This is my seventh summer with you guys, and this will be the shortest amount of time you ever heard me talk. Because you can see that the KSBA recommended policy changes are, they're very few compared to what we normally have. And those all came out of either the legislative session or some type of Supreme Court ruling or something like that. And you can see, and they've given you the rationale for that. What I want to tell you about is just the two district initiated ones, because you didn't get a rationale for that, and I wanted to explain why. So, in that second PDF that was attached that said district initiated policy updates, zero eight point one three two is the gifted and talented. Um, this is just changing the language a little bit, and I'll give a shout out to Ms. Hannah and Ms. Suzie because they, they're ahead of the game on this. This will eventually get changed for everyone, because this is what the state gifted and talented is going to language-wise. But they wanted to go ahead and clean it up now because they're working on some documents. So, that's why we went ahead and did a district initiated change, because this is going to be the language going forward for the state. The second one is zero nine point four two three two, and that's the tobacco, alternative nicotine and vape products. We were working, we were right smack dab in the middle of working on this one and trying to do some things when, a year ago, I believe it was, um, the KRS that governed this was rescinded. And so, a lot of this, like the CDW, there's not a CDW involvement now for, um.
Any tobacco.
Any tobacco products. That's not a CDW offense. And so, we kind of were getting down on the weed. So, we went back to KSBA and just said, what do you recommend of us? And they gave us just this brief recommended version and said that anything else we can address in the district code of conduct book, which you'll see in about a month, and we can bring to that. So, that's what we would like to go with, is the recommended version of that and just get it kind of cleaned up. So, those are the two things I wanted to explain to you.
Speaking of, Ms. Hannah.
We need to give her a shout-out.
Ms. Hannah has also been appointed to the gifted and talented state advisory council. We're really proud of that. And Dr. Markro has on the teacher one, so.
Who did?
Mine's just not out yet. But this is just the first reading, so there's no action we're involved to take on the policy updates on this. Appreciate Ms. Dameron's hard work on these every year. And sometimes they're out the year.
Thank you. Review of procedures.
Again, you all know we've had several of these on here at different times, and we've been working with KSBA, Kentucky School Board Association, to develop procedures or revise existing procedures to implement our school board policies. And these procedures work for your, for your review, but again, they do not require any board action. It's how the, how the district implements the policies that you all have approved.
Okay, Senate Bill 128 implementation plan.
So as you all have previously approved, our students that have the parents, guardians, and some of them are 18, that have elected to participate in the Senate Bill 128, what we've been calling the do-over here, we had to have an implementation plan that just kind of provides the highlights as to what, how that Senate Bill 128 will be implemented in Russell County schools. And so the introductory paragraph is, it just notes that on May 17, 2021, is when you all voted to allow all students seeking a supplemental school year to be offered, one for the 21-22 school year. And in accordance with Senate Bill 128, the implementation plan was developed and reviewed by the school board at the June 21st, 2021. That's this evening, meaning this plan does not go to the Kentucky Board of Educ, or the Kentucky Department of Education. It does just stay local for, for on file. But you'll notice on the second page, on the first part is just a simple implementation, and then the parents and guardians and students sign the second one and just acknowledge implementation of the, of the plan. So how many we wanted to total? Some of them are still fluid, yeah. I, I don't even have an accurate, I should have, Ms. Dameron, I apologize for that.
That's okay.
But we have, we've had several since we initially said that we, that I want to do this, the more they've just thought about it, worked through it, the more that they did. Ms. Dameron, do you have anything to add to that? Okay. So I recommend the Russell County Schools' Senate Bill 128 implementation plan be approved as presented.
I make a motion, Senate Bill 128 implementation plan. Joy Samuel?
Okay.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
How many total did you say that there are doing the do-over?
I, I don't have that number with me, Ms. Joy, I'll have that after the other ones. Some of them are still meeting and having conversations with the, with the principals or assistant principals, whoever the designated is. I apologize, I don't have my most accurate count with me.
That's fine, I just wondered.
Did you second, Joy? Pardon? Did you second the motion?
Uh, I can. I did, I was asking a question, but I can. I recommend Russell County Schools SB 128 implementation plan be approved as presented.
I'll second.
No, we, we already had you down motion. Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
This is one I hope you don't come to, but annual board action for emergency teacher and emergency substitute teacher certification.
I do too, but the chances of not having to use it are very slim, isn't it, Ms. Rita? This is something you all see every year, per KRS 161.100 and KRS 161.102, calls for each local board of education to approve a one-year emergency certification for teachers of specified areas of critical shortage in order to fill unanticipated vacant teacher positions, which may occur prior to or after the begin, opening of the upcoming 21-22 school year, and approve emergency certification for non-certified substitute teachers who are hired to broaden the substitute pool to cover classes when teachers are, for present, are, when teachers are absent. So just some clarification, we do not hire and work with teachers to get emergency certified if we can find someone that holds a certification, of course, unless there's something really bad on their background check or something like that, that we can't have and that, that they hold that. And whenever we hire somebody that is emergency certified by default, that position has to be posted again next year, so that person's not locked into the job or anything. Oftentimes, though, what we have seen, they do get in a program, don't they, Ms. Rita? And they've done a really good job for us, and then they can be equally considered. That, sometimes it happens and sometimes it doesn't. But more often than not, without a waiver, you're only issued emergency certificate for one year, so a teacher can not stay in a position with an emergency certificate year after year after year. In addition to that, it's required to do an emergency substitute teacher certificate with, on the surface, if you have 64 college hours, if there's some other things that go along with that, that someone can be issued an emergency certified substitute teaching certificate as well. But none of that happens without your, your loss approval to do that. But unfortunately, school districts cannot hardly operate in absence of really divided one of these. We had two people, I think last year, that had emergency certificates, if I'm not mistaken, both did very well and went back to school and got certified. Right now, I've got some positions posted right, right now that have no qualified applicants that have applied. Yes, sir? So I recommend approval of the annual board action for emergency teacher, substitute teacher certification.
And in the last two years, there, people are thinking, teachers are rethinking it, I think. We get a motion?
You need a motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
I recommend approval of the annual board action for emergency teachers and substitute teacher certification.
I'll second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
Russell County School District 2021-2022 Trauma Informed Care Plan.
All school districts in Kentucky are to have a school board-approved trauma-informed care plan in effect by July 1, 2021. The Russell County School District began transforming into a trauma-informed school district in 2019, when it was awarded a grant from the Foundation for Healthy Kentucky, known as the Rule of Kentucky ACES Project. The Bounce Coalition was contracted to provide trauma-informed care, professional development, implementation support, program evaluation, and progress monitoring. We are still continuing to work with the Bounce Coalition. We will continue to work with them throughout this entire school year, the 21-22 school year, actually, the July 14th and 15th, we have a training with us again to have some train the trainers. And I say all of that, we are absolutely, and I'm proud of this, we're ahead of most school districts in the state, because we have been working on a trauma-informed care plan with all of our faculty and staff that's had training since 2019. So we're two years into this, and a lot of school districts have to have a plan. We've never had to formalize a plan until now. We've known about this for a number of years, but I'm very, very proud of, of our school district and especially our faculty and staff. And Mrs. Dameron has worked so closely with them in providing, working on this trauma-informed care plan. Mrs. Dameron, are you highlighting anything that you want to note on the trauma-informed care plan?
No, I was just thinking that, I was just thinking that the biggest things are just that we have our real health specialist now, which is so key. I mean, that, that was such a good move for us, and she's really helping us stay focused and get our kids the care that they need. And then also, we're stepping our game up a little bit with like our first responders, and we're going to meet with them twice in both the AM and PM sessions this summer to accommodate more of them.
Let me just expand, because when we had, Ms. Dameron, Mr. Driver, myself, met with Chief Pierce, Chief Kerns, and Sheriff Derek Polston, just to talk about this, because they're a key part of this, on the handle with care part. So if, if something goes on in the family's home the night before, and the child's in school the next day, then we get a real simple handle with care. We don't need to know all the details, we just need to know that something's happening in that household. And so we can show the children a little bit of extra attention, love, et cetera. But as we was meeting with the, the police departments, we got, just long story short, the conversation talked about, they have people that work, you know, all different shifts, and so that's where we came up with the idea that we would meet one in the morning and then another shift at 8 o'clock at night with them. So the first responders, that they get to come home, get some sleep, and then when they're ready to go out for their evening shift, they can have this meeting with us. Because that first responders meeting, and Jackie and Mrs. Dameron lead that, but it's very, very important that we have with first responders every year. It's, it's a very powerful meeting. But I will say that I appreciate our first responders, I appreciate our meeting that we had with our law enforcement a few weeks ago. It was a great, a great meeting, and it's a great partnership that our school district has with our law enforcement and our first responders. Very, very proud of that.
And the third thing I would just highlight is just simply that this fall, for the first time, well, as long as I can remember, I mean, in 20 years, I guess, all of our schools are going to have what's called a social and emotional learning curriculum, which, which is just a very proactive way to teach kids good social skills, mental health skills, and that's going to trickle all the way down to the classroom teacher with that. So I was, we're really excited about that, because that's one of the main things that the research says that we need to do to have mentally healthy kids in the school system.
I'm going to just briefly go over the focus areas. One is to enhance the trauma awareness throughout the school community. Again, we're already ahead of that so much with all the training that we've had with our faculty and staff, and not only that, Ms. Sharon Coffey's met with the grandparent support group, we've had community meetings in the evening, we've, we've had different things with the health department. The focus area two is assess school climate, including but not limited to inclusiveness and the respect for diversity. Focus area three is develop trauma-informed discipline policies, that's something that we're going to be working on throughout the school year. And focus area four is collaborate with law enforcement to enhance trauma-informed school culture. And focus area five is provide services and programs to reduce the negative impact of trauma, support critical learning, and foster a positive and safe school environment for every student, so. I recommend that the Russell County School District Trauma Informed Care Plan be approved as presented.
I make a motion that we approve the Russell County District Trauma Informed Care Plan as presented.
I'll second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
2021-2022 District Funding Assurances.
Again, this is something you all see every single year. We have to go in on our side, what's called GMAP, and we go through here and select all these different categories, and that's where you'll note all the yeses, but I do not finalize anything until you all approve it. Every program that we receive dollars for, every program that we participate in, has strings attached to different assurances that we have to obligate ourselves to do. So the federal state programs provide financial support for the implementation of the District Comprehensive Improvement Plan under the supervision of each program director. The 21-22, which is the fiscal year 22, district funding assurances are attached for your review and approval. I recommend that the Russell County Board of Education accept the 21-22 District Funding Assurances as presented. And we don't get into the fiscal year, the next fiscal year, they will not release money until we have these approved and have the funding assurance statements. Ms. Carnes, we have to fill out a capital fund or a federal cash request, all these things have to be done. Again, this meeting, the June, the June meeting is a lot of these routine things that we do every single year.
I recommend the school board accept the 2021-22 District Funding Assurances as presented.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
So we'll get to go on class trips next year.
We're, we're kind of excited, we've got a trip that we've got, they've already put their name in the pot.
I know. Everybody's excited. Out of state and overnight trips.
The following group has received approval from the superintendent for the following out-of-state or overnight trip. Russell County Middle School, April 4th through the 8th of 2022, the eighth grade class trip to Washington DC. This is something they have done for a number of years, of course, hasn't happened for a couple of years now. And so we're proud that they have it back on the agenda and returned to a sense of normalcy. I recommend approval of the out-of-state and overnight trip.
I'll make a motion to approve the out-of-state and overnight trip.
I'll second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
No, no place better than Washington DC to go for history, for sure. It's, my kids want to go there for vacation. Superintendent Evaluation Information.
Of course, at the June 30th, 2021 meeting, the Russell County Board of Education will complete superintendent board's annual evaluation. Attached is a blank evaluation form for the board, for the board to review along with the standards. That's something, that's not changed for several years, the same document that you all have had. You all will meet in executive session, and then usually you typically call me in there, and then once that's been done, you announce the results publicly. But that's just FY overnight.
Okay, personnel reports.
This is summer, and you can tell by the, by the list here, we're not, we're not done hiring yet, are we, Ms. Rita? Personnel report, reports, Darren, Mr. Darren Gossett, retired, Russell County High School principal, effective July 31st, 2021. Ms. Bethany Baird, retiring, Director of Curriculum Instruction and State Programs, effective July 1, 2021. Jared Dunbar, hired, Russell Springs Elementary School kindergarten teacher. Ms. Bridget Holmes, she's moving to second grade at Russell Springs Elementary School. Haley Middleton, Russell Springs Elementary School, hired as instructional assistant. Madison Bell, Russell Springs Elementary School, hired as an instructional assistant. Megan Tarter, hired, Russell Springs Elementary School MSD teacher. Lori Holber Fortune, Russell Springs Elementary School, hired instructional assistant. Maria Dykes, Russell Springs Elementary School, hired as instructional assistant. Emily Wilson, hired, Salem Elementary School P5 teacher. Hannah Mitchell and Christina Ralsback and Caitlin Helm, they're all hired as instructional assistants at Salem Elementary School. Ms. Joyce Shears moving from the Russell County Middle School to Russell County High School as a social studies teacher. Jessica Gossett, hired at Russell County High School School Counselor. Billy Sean Kemp, hired as a substitute bus driver. Melissa McFaul, hired, Director of Curriculum Instruction and State Programs. Marcy Rhines resigned, effective June 30th, 2021. Keith Ellis resigned, Russell County Middle School Head Football Coach. Ashley Kovich resigned, Russell County Middle School Head Football Coach. And Cheryl Lukey resigned, Russell County Middle School Sixth Grade Girls Basketball Coach.
Judge?
I'm going to motion for Jared.
Thank you, everybody agrees?
He's second.
I'll second.
Mr. Kazoo's second?
Okay.
Who's Mr. Aaron? He's not here.
That's great.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Bye, Joy.
Bye. Good talking to you all, Russell County Public Affairs, anyway.
That's all, damn, why don't you stay here? Have a great Tuesday.